All right, well, there's time for the meeting to begin, and we will do the flag salute. New roll call, uh, one has been excused tonight. Uh, we have Michael. And we have, uh. And Thomas is on line?
Yes, I am.
Good and loud, awesome, you know, I am here. And we have two new student reps here tonight, we have Grace Hillis and Kendra. Thank you. You guys being here tonight. All right, and with that, uh, where we at here? Uh, no additions or deletions, uh. We have, uh, public comments, are there, uh, any public comments for anything that's on the agenda tonight? Anyone online?
Already checked, no one online.
No one's online either, okay.
Well, there are people online, just they don't want to comment.
Okay, now good, then moving on, we're moving on to the consent agenda tonight. Anybody like to make a motion to approve? For a second? We have a second, all right, all who approve? Uh, is, I'm gonna, all in favor say aye? All right, and motion is approved, now we're on to reports. And I see student reports.
Yep, so first up, we have, like you just said, we have our two new student reps, Hendrick. And Grace Hillis, uh, Hillis, thank you both for being here, you guys are both twelfth graders, right? Okay, and so they're gonna be joining us this year at a board meetings updating us on, I think these are last year's pitchers, right? We, uh, we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from you guys each week, and, um, I'll look forward to having a bit of time to talk with you before each meeting, so. I know that Kendra's talked about and kind of prepared some things, and then Grace, if you think of things to add in, please feel free.
All right. I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so last week was our spirit week for homecoming, uh, our Monday, like we had good days. Monday was mathlete versus athlete, and then Tuesday was twin slash iconic duo Tuesday. Then we had white lie Wednesday, where you write a white lie on a white t-shirt. Um, still summer Thursday, dressed up in floaties and all that stuff, and then Friday was extreme blue and gold Friday. Where we had our pep assembly, which myself and my secretary, we both hosted, it was a lot of fun. I think it was very successful, and then after that, we had, um, the parade where we walked to the elementary and primary school. We had lots of participation, it was, um, the first time I believe that theater walked in the parade, which was kind of a big deal, it was really cool to see the teachers, they were like. Um, we had swim team and football cheerleaders, we had it all, everyone joined, lots of participation. Um, the game was successful, we had Erin Jennings and Parker McCafferty, they won homecoming court, they're both seniors. It was actually both their birthdays too, which is really cool, so they both won, fun fact, um.
Uh, did anybody take a photo with a homecoming court?
Yeah, we have.
Did you send that to, uh, to the Rochester Sun News?
Um, I can.
Provide our, our email address.
I can have Ms. Sert, Ms. Sertal, she's the, um, the yearbook teacher, she took all the photos, she has all them, I can tell her tomorrow, just send them to you.
Yeah, please do.
Perfect, yeah.
Put that in the paper.
Yeah, of course, um, and October fifth, FFA is going to Evergreen Tour Fairgrounds for a leadership conference, which is pretty cool. Um, we had our first club fair this year, and I think it was pretty successful, lots of kids signed up, and then. Starting, I believe, this or next Thursday, we start our club days, where during CSR, we go to the club set this Thursday. I think it is this Thursday, yeah. Um, homecoming was very successful, nothing crazy happened, they said, the cheerleader said that they think they had around two hundred and twenty-eight people. Uh, so it's pretty good turnout. Um, yeah, I think that's.
Question, do you have anything else to add? You were going for the meeting that we had.
Yeah, um, you left out the part where we add, crush Sheldon. One, very, like, we did good. I just gotta add that in. I think that's it from what I have to say.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Would have any questions? Where's the football team playing this weekend? Centralia? Should be a good game too. Awesome.
I think the theme is construction, I think, yeah, I think it's construction themed.
Thomas, any questions?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on to our capital facilities task force presentation.
Right, tonight, we have Amanda Bowkuk and Mark Steelhammer, who are gonna, who sat on our task force. And we're two of the members of our committee, and they're gonna share a little bit about what the task force did, and what they're. Taking my sweater off. Nope, you have to stand up there with me, it's a rule.
So first of all, I wanna thank the board for giving us some time to share the results of this facilities committee. Um, for those of you that I haven't met before, my name is Amanda Bowkuk. Um, I've been part of the Rochester community since two thousand and ten, and I actually have three kids within the district, I actually have a junior. Um, a freshman and a sixty grader, um, and I'm joined by Mark Steelhammer, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, um, I'm Mark Steelhammer, I, uh, born and raised here, uh, went to school here, our kids went to school here. Our grandkids are going to school here, uh, this personal room right here was our fifth grade room, this was one through eight when I went to school. We've been in the community a long time, we, uh, I guess deep roots, we grow Christmas tree almost for fifty years, and we have some rentals. Gavel and hobby of mine that got away, but, uh, but I, uh, I look forward to this community still. Giving what I got out of it, as, as school system being strong, but not only buildings, but. Teachers, and personnel, et cetera, and you can get, put the best building in the world up, but. You don't have the faculty to go with it, and wanna work that way for it, and the boards and everything else, uh, anyway. I've said enough, but I, I do look forward to hoping this will go forward, and we can, we can build on it and keep going.
All right, so, um, we both were part of the facilities committee, and we started meeting actually back in May, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. Um, and total, in the group, there was twenty-one participants, and those, they were people from all different parts of our community, there were business owners. There were parents, there were, you know, grandparents, and people who have been part of this community for years and years and years. Um, so, we really started out with a really simple goal, and that was to identify what are the facility needs within the district. And make recommendations to the district and the board for future bond issues, now, I'm really thankful that the district, they. They stood aside, and they gave us an opportunity to really walk through the schools and experience this for ourselves. So, um, they provided us access to the building, so we could see what would really benefit the students of Rochester. They did provide all the relevant details of the buildings, as well as the levy and bond processes and challenges that we might face along the way. Now, as a parent, this was a really eye-opening experience, I have two kids right now that attend the high school. And I haven't been in most of those classrooms, when we go for conferences, we go to one classroom often. Um, and sometimes we'll walk around and make sure the freshmen know where their classes are, right? So it was an eye-opening experience for me to see how bad some of the repairs are needed there. Um, do you wanna share a little bit about your experience walking through?
Yeah, there, uh, what is that, school built in eighty-eight or eighty-nine, we, we put the foundation out with one of our last projects, the building contractor, but. There's, you know, there's, we went through these schools, the primary, elementary, middle, they, they, they all look pretty good. And then the high school, it was a little different, uh, situation, you know, there's just, uh. Lot of, lot of things hanging from ceilings, a lot of buildings that the, the gym has the carpet on it that doesn't look good, the classrooms were. It, it amazed me that there's that many kids housed in portables there. And, uh, I guess that when that was built, it was figuring thirty per classroom or whatever it was, and I, I don't think you do that, right? So, that's why the portable situation, but it definitely needs some, uh, uh. Refurbishing as far as what's there, and also to get it up to where our tech stuff is there, you know, and, and rooms that work for that, so.
Absolutely, thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Um, so while we believe that the district is making the most of the resources that we have available, we do believe that the needs far outweigh our current resources. So the primary, elementary, and middle schools have had more recent updates than the high school, so their needs were not as extreme as the high schools. Um, I know we only have about ten or so minutes, but I just wanna run through the list of some of the things that we identified at the high school that are of concern. So during the tour, we came up with the following list, the systems at RHS have exceeded their life expectancy, electrical systems are undersized. Most outlets are only one ten volt, and they need to be a hundred and twenty, there are no fume hoods in the science labs to support the programs that we offer. There is not space for science prep and storage, the sprinkler systems leak in several locations. Plumbing, uh, pipes leak in several locations, as well as old copper piping that is failing, and green staining was observed. The roof leaks in several locations, the cooling tower was replaced a few years ago, but the piping is still original. Technology is behind the times, partially due to the lack of appropriate electrical infrastructure. Finishes, um, throughout need replacement, sound in the gym, uh, the walls are old and unsightly. The gym bleachers are old and in need of replacement, the gym floor looks good, however, we have heard that there are a few dead spots within the gym. Which can affect some of our sporting events. Um, the spaces are undersized for current and future enrollment, so the commons and cafeteria is too small, and they currently have two lunches, and even then. The space will not hold all of the students, there are sixteen portable classrooms and no paved or covered pathways. There's no performing arts space, which impacts this program, as well as practices, performances, events. Uh, they're often held in the commons and are interrupted due to not having a designated space that can be closed off. Additionally, there's a lack of space for community and extracurricular activities, and there is more than one event happening on the same day that can also impact what's available at the school. Classrooms are undersized, the typical classroom, um, should be about nine hundred to nine hundred and sixty square feet, but our current classrooms are about. Eight hundred to eight hundred and forty square feet, the kitchen serves all of the other schools and is undersized for this task, increasing labor, storage, and transportation costs. The PE and athletic spaces, the football and soccer field is grass, and it can be of a safety concern, because it's hard to keep the turf in good condition. Which can lead to injury on our, of our athletes. Um, the track is asphalt and is old, a new synthetic track would potentially provide a higher level of safety. Uh, new fields would also serve the community, as well as the PE and athletic programs year round, and per, would provide a sense of pride for the students. Student, athletes, parents, and the community. As far as safety and security, there are no vestibules in the building, once someone comes in the front door, they can go directly to the commons. We do now have that outside door locked, and that has, I've heard scuttlebutt through the parents, that. A lot of people are really happy with those additional security changes, so thank you for, to the board and everybody who helped make that happen. Uh, there are security cameras on the inside of the building, but not in all of the parking lots, drive lanes, or fields. The pathways to the portables are problematic as students walk across drive lanes, and there are no covered walkways to the portals. So, I don't know, do you guys still hearing that, because I know how much we provided for our students here in Rochester. But that is a massive overhaul that's really needed at our high school, so. Um, with all of that in mind, which that's a pretty extensive list, we have a few options available to us, and. As the committee, we wrestled with what to really recommend to the board, so at first, I wanna take a look at those options, the first one was to replace Rochester High School. So as you can see, the cost would be about ninety-five million dollars, okay? Now, the SCAP funds that are available is a little over seventeen million, should we go that route, which would mean the bond. Would really need to produce about seventy-eight million to be able to complete that. Now, it would replace the existing building and portables with an approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot code compliant building. Including, um, new academic spaces and auxiliary gym and performing arts center, as well as turf fields, spectator seating. New track and renovated fields for baseball and fast pitch. Now, the second option was, instead of trying to replace the entire building, would be to modernize and add to the existing Rochester High School. Now, I don't know if you guys see the price tag on that, but our building is in such bad repair, that. Really, we're about one point eight million dollars difference, trying to upgrade the building to get it to the standard of what it really. Hopefully would be going forward, so, once again, the SCAP funds would be available if we did go that route. Um, and the bond proceeds would need to be about seventy-six million to be able to complete that, now, as you can see. There would be a, uh, fifty thousand square foot addition, that includes all those code compliant program spaces. Um, and so that is definitely an option that we looked at as well. Now, in addition to that, the other schools, while they don't have that huge laundry list of items that we know are gonna have to have something done in the next couple of years. There is a few things that we think would definitely help with security and safety at the other buildings. So the safety and security improvements to Rochester Middle, as you can see, would be replacing the football and soccer fields with turf. Renovating the baseball and fast pitch fields, as well as relocating the reserve septic drain field and adding a walking track. And then constructing a vestibule on the interior of the main entrance and adding a covered play structure. Now, the cost for that would be a little over three million, to be able to add those up to the middle school. So as far as Grand Mound is concerned, Grand Mound has had a recent update, so there's not as much needed there. Um, it's constructing a vestibule at the main entrance, um, constructing a covered play structure, as well as providing a forever lawn. The bond would be to produce about two point four million to be able to accomplish that. Next is the primary school, um, to construct a vestibule at the main entrance, construct covered play structures, and provide a forever lawn. Would be about two point four million. So, as you can see, it might be a little small, I probably should have made this on different slides, so. These are really the bonds scenario that we discussed as our facilities committee, so the first one would be. If we replaced Rochester High School with a new building, and we did all of the safety and security upgrades to the other three buildings. So as you can see, with the SCAP funds that are available, the total bond would be about eighty-nine million. Now, bond scenario two is that modernization in addition to Rochester High School. So you can see, the bond amount would be about eighty-seven million, so, we're pretty close, as far as. It, do we upgrade, or do we try to go for a replacement building? And then the last scenario was not doing the safety and security upgrades to the other buildings, but instead just focusing on trying to get the high school. What it needs to continue for the next thirty-plus years. So. The facilities committee was a very, very diverse group of people, as I mentioned, we had all different politics, we had all different generations. Parents, grandparents, business owners, people that are new to Rochester, and people that have lived here their entire lives. And we all came to the same conclusion, that if we had a magic wand that we would wanna push, to try to get the bond passed. And get a new high school. So we believe that while we were able to come to that, the community, given the right information, would also come to that same conclusion. So, our kids and our community deserve to be safe and have resources they need to thrive, so our recommendation is to move forward with bond scenario one. So you can see this is a mock-up of what that might look like, building a new high school, um, it would be built on the existing. I believe it's fifty-four acres.
All in, including the elementaries, it's sixty-six.
Okay, so it would be built on the same plot of land, and it would actually be built, um, I believe. The plan would be hopefully to put it up in the front, so that the existing building could be used, um, and so. Ultimately, that is our recommendation to the board from the facilities committee. Let me go to the last slide for me, thank you. Um, now, as far as recommendations and act, uh, action items. Um, we do recommend, hopefully, that the board consider moving forward with bond proposal one. Um, hopefully, it could get placed on the ballot with the levy to minimize the cost needed to bring it to a vote, as well as. Making it easier for the community to kind of rally behind supporting our schools within our district. Um, we do have a citizens committee that's ready to rally the community to help us pass the levy and the bond, and there's already been brainstorming that has been done. Um, as far as, you know, what can we do to help the community see this really, really strong need within our, within our district? So, you guys have any questions?
I don't have a question, I, I just wanna thank you, Amanda, Mark, and the rest of the committee for, for the time put into this, and the seriousness. The evaluation to put in, and, and, and having gone through this and being part of the committee, uh, before I was on the board, um. Five years ago, six years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, it was I O G, uh, and to, to see the state of our facilities, um, even though. Our maintenance team is amazing.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But, uh, there's only so much you can do.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it.
Well, and I think we saw that a little bit this week, when we lost water pressure, and we couldn't flush toilets, and, you know, that's the hard part about having outdated systems is. There's only so much you can do, and things are gonna break, and our maintenance dollars are going towards that, and if we could. Rally the community in a really positive way, to bring back the bond, and then pass the levy, that would really help our district a lot, and it would help our kids a lot.
Uh, again, as I said, thank you, uh, the committee, they mentioned that there's. Have you spoken with people outside of the group that was on the facilities committee, have you talked to other people in the community about this?
So, the only thing that we have done, as far as that is concerned, is, people did know that there was a facilities committee, people did know that. There were certain people who were really active on that committee, and people know that the levy is coming, so we have discussed, because not knowing. Which way you guys wanna go to push the bond, really just seeing if people are willing to help support, um, and rally the community to help our schools. And then hopefully, if you guys decide which way you'd like to go, I think we could mobilize that fairly quickly, because I do think in general. Um, like I said, we had a very diverse group of people, and we all came to the exact same conclusion. And so, that gives me faith that we can really rally the parents and the teachers, and, you know. The community to back our kids, because they need it, so.
Thomas, any question?
He is, um, he was knocked offline, and I'm trying to get him back on.
I would like to say thank you guys for everything you guys were doing, putting this committee together and looking at these options, um, yeah. Baffling the, the numbers, and, uh, my first year on the board, uh, we were trying to pass a remodel of the high school. And it failed, I believe we were at fifty-six percent at that time, and. That's how I got involved with the school board, because the roof was leaking in the band room, and I would go watch my daughter's presentation, uh. Doing her band stuff, and the AC was broken at spring concert, and it's like, they had big portable fans in the doorways. And I'm like, okay, what's going on, what can I do to help, and that's when I ran for this position to get involved. And, yeah, uh, I really appreciate the effort and, and the hard work, and I really hope we can, uh, bring the whole community together. And, uh, I think they'll all be excited for the new football field. Yeah, I, I look at the conceptual drawings here, and baseball stuff, and it, it, uh. It really looks like we can become a very state-of-the-art community place, where maybe some of the kids from some of the local areas wanna come to Rochester District.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh.
Thomas is back? Thomas?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, uh. Do you have any questions for the committee?
No, I, I've heard everything, I heard everything up until the point where she was standing at the, um, dry erase board. So, but I, no, I didn't, I, I didn't have any questions for her.
Excellent, all right, well, thank you guys again very much, and, and we'll definitely take this into consideration.
So, is there anything, right, so, cause how the way that you, um. Basically, like listed off all the things that we have to be improving the project was wonderful and very persuasive, is there any way that with the project? Because I feel like people see like a huge number in money, especially they shy away from it. Is there any way that maybe we could go ahead and do smaller renovations, and then show people like the results, especially with, um, how. It poses a risk to our students, especially like our athletes, is there any way of making projects that are smaller and would be a bit cheaper, and that you could show results to the community?
I think that that is amazing, and I'm not a board member, so I don't know if I should be answering this, but I do know that they constantly are doing things. And I think sometimes those things, the parents and the teachers and the kids don't always get to see all the work that's put in. Um, now, when we decided what we were gonna recommend, one of the big conversations is, how do we make sure that everyone in our community benefits from this? Not just the high schoolers, and really, that's where those safety concerns and safety upgrades come in for the other schools. And I do think that that is a little bit of that smaller projects that you're looking at, now, a lot of those, we, we had to cut money from the budget this year, and so. I don't know that there is anything that can be done prior to a bond passing, and so I do think a big part of getting, if it does go on the ballot, getting it passed. Is going to be giving tours of our schools, letting people see what really needs to be done. And I think, you know, when we all walked through, we were like, I mean, I have two kids that go there, and I was like, why are there things hanging out of the ceiling? Like, this is crazy, and it's because it wasn't built for the technology that we have today, and, you know, the science rooms aren't built for the kind of science that they're doing right now. And so I do think, along those same lines, is, you know, showing that the district is gonna be a good steward of those funds. And I do believe that when you look at what they've been able to accomplish with a limited budget, that all of those hallmarks are in place already. So I think it's just communication and letting people really see what has been done, that maybe we don't always call out.
Okay, thank you.
Question from the crowd?
Thank you, what happens to the old building?
That's a great question, I'm gonna let somebody else answer that question, and how much does it cost to do something with the old building?
All of the cost is incurred in the bonds right now, and it would eventually come down.
It would be tore down and demolished.
Yep, and used for parking spaces, actually, because we'd have to move the, we only have so much space on the property. And so we'd have to move parking lots around, and some of the different, uh, other spaces that we have. Um, to use, yeah, and, but we would have the buildings for the kids to go to school in while we were building a new one, which is a really nice piece.
Which would actually make the remodel quite a bit more challenging, if we're trying to remodel a building that we're supposed to be housing kids in. So that was another reason that the committee does, the price difference was so negligible, that we really should push for a new building if we can.
Good selling point.
Yeah, I believe it shows a picture on page nine, uh, where teacher parking where the existing building is.
Yeah.
Two separate parking lots, and with, with ball field adjustments, and new synthetic turf. Do either of you have any other comments or ideas, considering you both attend?
Um, I really liked the idea of the, the roofs outside, the, um. Cause I hate getting wet, but when I have to portable class, and I have to walk in there, I'm like, running across the parking lot to not get wet, and then. The portables, they smell so bad, when everyone's like, stinky and wet, and you're just like, sitting in there breathing, and the heaters never work, and you're just like. Oh my gosh, it's so cold, that was actually one of my main things when I became president, I was like, I want, like, I want the, what are they called, the. The covers. The covers, yeah, the covers, so like, I hate being wet.
What I just heard is that, that she wants to help do tours. We need, we need the high schoolers to tell us what it's like, if we get to that point, because it is hard to imagine, like, because we're not there every day, so. Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, we got that.
Did we get that on record? Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for your guys' input, it's really important that the adults in the room get to hear how, how the students feel about that stuff. All right.
We're on a great start, so it says right there on the screen.
That's a full update.
So it's been, it's been a lovely beginning of the school year, we've got some photos to show you some things. So, look at the cute little kindergarten, if that isn't the reason to go home, I don't know what. So we have eight classes, and they're all, you know, looking pretty good numbers, and knock on wood. I don't have to hire anybody by the end of this week, numbers are holding steady, we don't have to. Costco doesn't carry kindergarten teachers, in case you were wondering, um, our dual language program has room for only one more kiddo. And, uh, they're pretty stinking bilingual, so one of the rules when you go into the classroom. If it's Mrs. Enslie, you must speak English, if it's Mrs. Ramirez's class, you must speak Spanish. I used to speak more Spanish than I presently do. And I've discovered I've lost my future tense and my past tense, I can only talk in the present. So as I try to go in to tell her something very important about buses at the end of the day, and I am stumbling, bumbling through with my Spanish and I have to get the magic blue scarf, which gives you permission to speak the other language that you're struggling. And there's a couple of high school gals that come over and support the class and they were very kind to just smile at me like that's, that's a nice try, Mrs. Roni.
They're in my leadership class.
And just, you know, kids writing their names and smiling. I love it. May I have the next one? So we've had some bigs coming down to read to our littles. That was two Fridays ago. Football players came down to read, even a coach managed to get looped into the shenanigans and I really appreciate, oh, Mrs. Easley, I spelled your name wrong. Oh, Lord. Mrs. Easley, not easily. She does a great job helping facilitate bigs coming down to work with the littles. The littles just totally eat it up. I mean, they could be reading grocery shopping lists and, and the little kids be like, that's lovely. Read some more. And then you already referenced the parade. It was a tremendous parade because there were sports represented, theater represented, robotics was represented. There was another group of people that couldn't read their sign that were represented. And I really appreciated the floats, which looked like yard carts decorated. That was pretty awesome too. But Grand Mound lines, the west side of the maintenance road, primary, we line the east side and we hoot and holler and there's the band and it's just, the kids have, some of the children, as you can see, are, are dressed in appropriate gear and they understand football. The rest of them, they're just outside yelling because it's a good time. So it was a tremendous start to the year. Questions, ideas, any?
I have a question.
Yes.
I didn't know that the, the bigs visit for littles. How do you do that? Like how, because my feeder group, we, I can speak that we would love to do that.
We can hook you up.
Yeah, I would love to read theatrically to all the littles.
Yes, I, I know your name. I know how to find you. You should be very excited. You guys get out like a whole hour before we do on Fridays. So we'll get you connected with a classroom.
I would love.
Theatrically or otherwise.
Yeah, theatric, because we're fun. We read fun, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll email you. Miss Kelly. And those bigs are coming over to our not so littles next week or this Friday, actually. So, whoa, we're jumping right in. So I don't have as many cute little pictures. But I want to talk a little bit about social emotional learning, social emotional learning that's going on at G M S. So three times throughout the year, we do something called the Dessa where we assess those skills on the right. A teacher fills out a quick two minute to five minute survey about each of their children, kind of rating them on where they need support in those areas. And then we use that information to plan support for kids. And last spring, you might remember I shared, that was one of areas we felt really successful about. We had very low numbers of kids needing intense support. And certainly lower than the, the national average. So that was good. But still kids in support. So, um, one thing we started this summer, a little heavier focus with the extra days that our counselor has on contract is I sat down with her and we identified all the kids that showed needs from last June on that Dessa. We also looked at just kids she worked with last year that maybe didn't show up on that assessment with teachers, but they needed extra support. We identified all the new families that registered this summer. And then we also looked at our McKinney Vento list of families and the counselor called out and set up conferences for each one of those families. Some weren't able to come in, but we invited each of them to come in or they did a conference over the phone to kind of get proactive. Like, you know, we, we knew you there or you're new to our district. What are your needs now? And really, just a real relationship building conversation to find out what their current needs are. And then also happening in social emotional learning is each of our teachers have a weekly focus that they're doing. Weekly focus with leadership from our counselor. Okay, that's really weirdly worded, but so our counselor every week sends out a little reminder because teachers are busy as all get out. And says for each grade level, here's what you're focusing on. She also at different times throughout the year is focusing on lessons in the library. So she goes in and teaches groups of kids for a short chunk of their library time. And like she's identifying it's a bullying unit this week. And then she reminds them like next week, we're going to be doing the, the first Dessa for the school year. So little quick reminders so that teachers can stay on track with that pacing for the social emotional lessons. Um, also something that was added to our second step curriculum, which of course is our social emotional learning lessons is a principal announcement. And so I've got a handy little booklet that has these principal announcements that tie to our building, be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And all of the different lessons that are going on within the cell lessons in the classroom and that the counselor is teaching. So this is one example of the one I read this week. And then I, I didn't ask them to do this, but as I've been visiting classrooms, I've noticed teachers have literally written on their whiteboard, principal cell announcement and they, they don't write the whole thing out, but they'll write mistakes are okay, smiley face. So they can reference that during the week and as I've chatted with them. Um, so it's really tying together all the things we're doing. The last one, I don't, I don't expect you to like memorize all the schedules. But another thing that we did that has really helped um, kind of just help support our social emotional stuff as we adjusted our lunch recess schedule this year. We used to do recess first and then lunch and we had this large group of kids coming in all at the same time. So it took longer for kids to get into lunch. So essentially what this, I'll dissect it a little bit for you, but what it, what it does is when our fourth grade goes to lunch, we only have three classes go to lunch and then five minutes later, three others come in. So those three classes are able to come in, get settled, the teachers stay there for a few minutes to support them. And then the next three, they're settled and they're nice little examples. And then the next three come in and they get settled and have their lunch. And then after about that twenty minutes, they go to recess. Now, the nice thing is, is they go to recess, five minutes later, the next grade level is going to start coming in half the grade level at a time and then half five minutes later. What happens is that there's that little buffer. So if kids aren't done eating, they don't have to get right to recess. They can take that extra two, three, five minutes. And they can just hang behind. And it took a couple of weeks of hard work and training, but the kids, it's just, it's just beautiful out there. It's so relaxed. It's actually enjoyable to be in an elementary lunchroom. So and recess is just running really smoothly. Fifth grade is a little odd. That's that big group that's been coming through, one hundred ninety-eight kids, I believe we have right now. So we actually sent half of them to recess at the last group, half to lunch. And then we flip flopped and that's, we camped in all in the lunchroom. They're too big now. They fit as third graders, not as sixth graders. And that too, just not having all that extra stimulation, it just makes for a pleasant experience. So those are things we're doing to just make school a little more happy and pleasant and make kids feel welcome and like they belong there. So, because they do. Any questions about any of that?
Board members? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thomas, do you have any questions?
No, I'm going to have a question for all the principals at the end.
All right, surprise bonus round question.
Oh yes, they better be on their Ps and Qs.
All right. Thank you, Thomas.
Got some extras in this form if anybody wants them. They're sitting over on my seat. There's a few extras there. Get some pictures I can start with. Sweet. No, back added. Great times in classrooms. Kids are in there learning. Uh, lunchtimes and, and a little bit of other time. Kids are having fun. Spending some time together. It's great, you know, that, that they can do that. And they're still working on things that are mentally challenging. So you can see a little chess play going on there. Can't wait till chess club starts up. That's not even chess club. We had a little fun with Howdy Family Night, had a couple of hundred folks out, uh, what, three weeks ago now? On a, on a Thursday evening and it was a good time. And probably most of the staff was there. I think we had about fifty-five percent of our staff was there. Uh, so I can say most of the staff was there and it was a good time. It was, it was a lot of fun. So it's always fun to bring everybody together right at the beginning and, and kind of mix it up a little bit, have a good time. But we are at the end of September and so sports seasons have kicked in for pro, high school, middle school, all that kind of stuff. And we've got our academic information back from the state. So we've got our, our area comparisons looking like our sports standings that is here from the middle school. And you can see how the middle school did in our S B A tests back in May um, against other area school districts. And take a look on that. I highlighted us in red as you can see. We finished in the top three in three out of seven of the areas. We finished in the top half in six out of seven of the areas and six out of ten in, in one of them. The state average in four out of seven of the areas. So we ended up as a better than average school in the state of Washington as overall S B A scores. I will take that uh, as a starting point, something to work from. And you can see in the lower left, I know some of you have talked about this in the past, in the lower left, how we did against other school districts. As a, as a one loss record. Now, we did not do well against Olympia or Tom Water. But we beat every other school district on this list. So some of them were handily than others. But um, that's what's going on. We recognize that we have some challenges. We know that there's work to do. Uh, we have added a few more math intervention classes in order to help our students to succeed better in mathematics. And we are focused on continuing to improve. I'm giving you an overall piece of data here for, you know, but I've dug down a lot deeper into some different areas of our school and some of the statistics. And so has my staff gotten started in that. And so we're going to be working to continue to make improvements. So. Questions, comments? Yeah.
It's great to see this. I'd like to. I wonder if you have thoughts about like Olympia and Tom Water, is it staffing ratio? Do they have worse staff?
I don't think it's staffing ratio.
You don't?
No. If, if anything, I think, I think there's an economics piece to it and I think there's an academic, I think there's a four-year college graduate parents piece to it. Uh, there's a few things like that that I think really come into play. So, and, and they are significant impacts. Significant impacts. Sure. Yeah. But I'm not giving up on that.
No, no.
So that's not.
Again, this is great. Thank you for sharing it and.
I, I, I keep them, I'm not hiding from Tom Water and Olympia. I'm keeping them on the list and I want to knock out, so. I know there's a lot to digest there. Nothing else?
I have nothing.
You got anything from Thomas? All right, he's just going to wait.
Please, like, like on here, uh, your eighth grade, like on the math.
Yeah.
What, what did they do as seventh grader or do you know?
I do know.
Were they still lower?
I actually deleted that information off of this just so that you guys wouldn't have too much to try to digest. We, no, absolutely. So we ended up dropping about four percent against the state from seventh grade to eighth grade. Uh, we actually dropped in two areas. Um, I want to say seventh grade language arts was the other one that dropped and it's two out of six because I can't compare us. So science does it over three year span. And three years ago, we were in COVID, so these kids didn't get a fifth grade science, so I can't compare them to previous. But I can the other six. Those are two areas that we struggled from one year over year. But since I brought it up or since it was brought up, I want to do a flip side to that. And what you need to know is the fifth graders in language arts, those kids were seven and a half points below the state average as fifth graders and three point four above the state average as sixth graders. Those teachers got those kids eleven points to the good from where they were before. And if you look at math, it's a two point two percent increase. It's actually over six percent higher than they did a year ago. So.
Thank you, Will.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Dionis. I'm the principal at Rochester High School. Uh, Grace and Kendra did such a good job talking about homecoming. Figured you need some pictures. So as I talk, we'll put some pictures up there. Doctor Bethman called me and said, you're not just talking about homecoming, are you, Kevin? So, uh, four areas I want to touch real quick. Attendance is obviously a huge uh, piece of instruction and learning. And when kids are in school, they're learning. Not yet, wait for the next one. And so before the school year started, uh, we went through our attendance from last year and any student that missed more than ten percent of the school year was flagged when they came in for their parents' success meetings with their parents. Uh, that little asterisk by their name, I said, yeah, you got an asterisk by your name, you go see Mr. Dionis. And so I had numerous conversations with students and parents and what you find is, as unique as our kids are, is the reasons are the reasons for not being in school are just as unique. And so it was taking time, listening to them and their family, identifying what the challenges were. What are some things we can do better to help them? What are things they can do? Helping them identify what, a lot of our kids, um, I've had this conversation over the last year and a half at Aberdeen and now here. If so many of our kids, even seniors come into the office and you say, what are you going to do when you get out of here? And it's like, and so what I've done is I've had numerous conversations through the school year already about what do you want to be in life? Where do you want to live? What's your family look like? You know, and all those things, because that builds a picture of where you go in life and what you want to do. And so trying to get our students to build those connections. And so by being in school every day, they're getting instructions they need to put the tools on their tool belt. So when they go out into the community, they have the ability to get jobs and provide to themselves and their families lives that they want to have. And so that's really, really important. All right, next slide now. So we made some changes from last year. Um, one of the big ones is cell phones. Obviously in today's generation, cell phones are considered like an integrated part of students' lives. And we know, as we're talking about attendance with learning, distractions on learning. The research shows that when students' cell phones are on their desk, so they're able to touch them, they're a distraction because even if they aren't on them and it's in their pockets. That's a distraction from learning. And so we've implemented a new cell phone policy. And to be honest, I've had numerous kids come to me and say, thank you for enforcing the cell phone policy. Because now I can be focused in the classroom. It's not just the parents and the teachers and administrators who want their kids on the phone, but the kids really appreciate the fact that they can be in the classroom learning and not have that distraction of a cell phone. I'd say about ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of the kids, this is not a problem for them. There's some that are very, you know, very addicted to that device and getting them. But we've made progress. We had a young man last year who would not get off his cell phone. Kind of elevated through our policy. And the requirement is, is when you hit a certain step, you have to, when you come in the building, you have to go to the office and turn your phone in. And he actually willingly came in the office this morning and handed the phone over to Ms. Brooks, Assistant Principal, and went and locked it in the cabinet. And he came at the end of the day and picked it up without incident. So we're making progress and I think that's huge for these guys because it's an employability skill. If you can't not be on your cell phone, you're going to have a hard time keeping a job because most employers don't want you touching your phone while you're working, right? So we're, not only are we teaching them how to be there in school every day, but we're also teaching them how to be focused on the job and doing what's really important. And right now, their main focus is learning and developing their skills. Okay, next slide. Parking lot, I see there's a car, so that's perfect. We just ride into the parking lot. Um, I wasn't here last year. But I have heard stories that our parking lot could be somewhat troubling at times. Grace and Kendra are over there nodding their head. Based on what I was told is it used to take till almost five minutes to three to three o'clock to get the parking lot cleared. We implemented some new parking policies to help kind of help our students understand the expectations we're out there. I'm out there every day directing traffic. And what we do is we now have the parking lot nearly empty before the buses are leaving. We have probably, the buses leave at two thirty-one-ish. So we have about four minutes where we have to wait for the buses to go, but generally every day between two thirty-seven and two thirty-nine, our parking lot is empty. And that's, the kids have done a great job. They've learned how to zipper, you know, alternating sides. We're still teaching. Some of them want to sit there and they're kind of hesitant to go, even though it's their turn. So I'm out there. Come on, let's go. Um, because everyone, the faster we can get them out. And so one other one other um, addendum to the uh, new high school is in the design process, it would be really awesome if we could have the buses go in a different direction than all the kids. That would work really good. Um, that would be cool. Just a suggestion. Um, so but the parking lot's running really well. I'm very proud of our kids. They are learning how to be respectful and courteous to each other in the parking lot. They've kind of learned the rhythm. They see when someone's backing out to stop and give them the space. They don't just crowd by him and say, tough you. Um, you're not getting out. So it's, it's been a great experience. And last slide. Um, I don't know if you noticed that front row there, but uh, we might see someone we know there in the front row in that big picture. Um, Kendra mentioned our clubs. Uh, what we've done is we had a huge club fair. And it was during our advisory period, and so we allowed kids to see all of the clubs that were available. But the other part of that is, is we also gather data on the clubs they wanted to see that weren't there. And so we're trying to build, the idea is, is like the really cool clubs meet after school. And if you have to ride the bus or you don't have a ride, you can't go to those clubs. And so what we've done is we're creating um, two periods in a month. So alternating Thursday, so every other Thursday we'll have a club day. So those clubs can meet during their advisory time. So everybody that wants to be a part of a club can be part of a club because we know for student engagement, being involved in activities and clubs and sports really enriches an educational environment, engages kids, gives them a reason to be at school, which attaches to our attendance and learning. Um, all those different pieces all playing together make a huge difference. And so we're trying to develop uh, a culture where our students really feel like their needs are being met and they have things that they enjoy doing and want to be at school. And that's it. There's any further questions?
I have none. Thank you.
We got one hanging over, so I don't know what he's gonna hear.
Okay, you guys ready? Ladies?
Drum roll.
Okay. Since the school year has started, how many bullying complaints have you had so far? And was there a response back from the parents to either you or your representative?
I'll go first. At the high school, we had one official complaint. Uh, the parent emailed me. I contacted the parent back. We had to get through homecoming before we could deal with it, but we dealt with it on Monday and that's the only one that I am aware of at this point.
Okay, was, was the parent, was the parent, excuse me, was, was the parent satisfied um, with whatever happened, however it was handled?
When I spoke with her, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm not using any, any references. This is a shotgun blast to everybody, just, you know.
The primary has had three, two resolved, one is still in process.
Okay. Thank you.
And the elementary is copycatting primary apparently. We had have three not formal bullying, but just my kids being bullied and followed up and they've been resolved.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the middle schools had a few that I'm aware of. I don't, Mr. Tymon Hamels more of those things than I do. There is one open situation related to outside of school. Um, cyberbullying that is currently open. We found out about it uh, yesterday afternoon. We're dealing, we're dealing with it today.
Okay, you said cyberbullying?
Yeah, outside of school cyberbullying stuff.
Okay, okay. Uh, it's just, the, the reason I ask this is, while it is important, you know, you look on Facebook and we have, you know, community members ranting and raving about this and that. And um, I made a comment, which I don't normally do um, on one, and I got crickets in return. Um, so what I'm, I'm all I'm wanting to do is just make sure that the um, when we have these problems, and I know you're doing it, that they are getting addressed because I talked to Dr. Bethman and I know things are getting handled. Um, but I'm just, I was just curious. That is it. No, no other reason why. I was just curious as to um, what you have seen so far and um, has there been any issues um, you know, from the parents not liking the result of, you know, the answer that you gave them uh, in reference to whatever the problem was? So. That's it. That's all I had.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, student rep, do you have anything to add to what Thomas was saying? Are you guys missing any sort of bullying or aggressive behavior in school?
Um, not personally. Or, or I haven't seen anything. I am currently doing running start, so I'm not at the high school twenty-four seven anymore, but for the time that I am there, I actually haven't witnessed anything. Um, yeah, actually, that's kind of crazy.
Last year I definitely saw a lot and was it, it was, I, yeah, I saw a lot, but this year I haven't, I haven't um, seen or heard of anything.
How about smoking in the bathrooms?
That's another thing. Yeah, that's like I don't know. I don't, I try not to, I try to avoid the bathrooms for that reason specifically. I refuse to use the bathrooms at the school.
I feel like you see like a large amount of people in the bathrooms. You just like walk the other way.
Yeah. Um, I know at the the homecoming, it definitely, I think it was happening. I went in there and I was like, hey, folks, smells in here, like, get, get out of here, like, let's not do that. You're gonna get in trouble. There's consequences. They were like, hey. I don't know if it was them. They definitely smelled and it was definitely known.
Is this like cigarette smoking or is it like vaping? Like it smells like bubble gum?
Yeah, it smells like, it smells like bubble gum. It's like, what's this smell? I don't know.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Yep, that's fantastic.
Okay, um, so I appreciate that. No, uh, this was our first homecoming, my first dance at uh, Rochester High School. And so I was watching and um, it's really difficult because the bathroom is kind of a private space, so it makes it really difficult. Um, but what we will do in the future, at dances specifically, is have an adult that's present and it's it's primarily the girls' bathroom is where the issue is. Um, I have very few vape detectors go off in the boys' bathroom. It's always out of the girls. Um, and we've taken we're kind of be, we're trying to be proactive. It's Ms. Johnson, our um, educational assistant during passing period, or Ms. Brooks. Um, there, there's, there's the one, the, the girls' bathroom in the academic wing has two bathrooms or two stalls, and that usually doesn't have too many people in it. But the one down by lunchroom has five stalls, which is where everyone goes because there's so many stalls. It's a lot that you're going to get access. Um, and so we've taken to kind of be proactive. I stand out in the hall in that specific area just for um, and we've had students actually volunteering and, and come into the office and reporting other students that are engaging in the behaviors we don't want in our school. And so we're slowly um, having conversations with those students and trying to rectify it and create a culture where the students feel like they can be safe and secure in the building because that's what we're striving for.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, I know myself personally, safety and security is number one priority on my list. Whether it's outside influences or, or internally and bullying and harassment, uh, there's no I have zero tolerance for that stuff. I mean, things can be corrected, but, you know, it's something that needs to be addressed early enough to, in, in earlier years than waiting until it's become a bigger problem later in, in schools, you know, in the later grades, so.
I think too, in the high school with like bullying, it's also important because I think more of our students are able to encourage others if they are being bullied to speak up about it and other people are going to be standing up for that student that is being bullied.
Great. Glad to hear that. Excellent. All right, um, at this time, um, we believe so the principals.
If you'd like to.
Yeah, um, all the principals, you guys are, you guys got to get back at school early and our student reps. Um, you guys are important. Welcome to stick around if you guys want to. Or if you want to, you can leave and get on Facebook and tell everyone what a wonderful time you guys had.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Do I get to keep this when I'm done? When you're done, yeah, yeah, one like after everything. Yes, we're gonna serve that and more.
Thank you so much.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, we are moving on to
I am a lot less fun than that group.
All right.
Yeah, so it looks like we're starting with budget status report. Um, my annual disclaimer that although this August has happened and we're technically twelve years, twelve months completed. We're in accrual districts, so these are not final financial reports. Um, there's still adjustments to be made. So at August thirty-first, our revenues were at ninety-seven percent of budget and expenditures at ninety-nine point six one percent of budget. So the um, all fund summary is next. The same disclaimer, these aren't final financial reports. There's still uh, entries to be made. So our ending balance for general fund was one point six million, capital projects, three point four, debt service at seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ASB at five hundred and fifteen thousand, and transportation vehicle at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
When do we get that vehicle?
Um, I believe January is the expected arrival date.
Cool.
Um, so the, a little more detail of the ending fund balance for general fund, uh, restricted for care over three hundred and two thousand, restricted to the local sub-fund of three hundred and eighteen thousand. And we have a million dollars to include for the fund balance policy.
Yeah, last part.
Oh, the, there's a million dollars that is applied towards the fund balance policy that the board has.
Okay. And our fund balance, uh, uh, future, future tighter than we used to.
Yes, they are.
Um, for all known reasons, uh, we are, um, you know, I, I'm not sure, but we were, we've been trying to maintain the three to five percent and we're probably the, the number closer to two?
Um, yeah, yeah. We've been trying to maintain five to eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's a topic, a topic of discussion for the October work session. Um, enrollment for September, good news, kids came in, the kids returned and extra showed up. So we are sixty-one FTE over budget. Um, which is wonderful news. Their running start doesn't, doesn't count in September. Um, we started the year at twenty-six point eight students at heart, which is I think the highest number I've seen in a long time for a starting point. They typically in there, but don't start there. Three hundred and twenty-four um, students in special education and one student for gravity. And I want to point out, if you look, go back to this report, um, our transitional, the kindergarten program is called out in that top box. It's always been included in the kindergarten number, but now they have us call it out. So it is a separate line item now. Yes.
Um, you remind me on twelfth grade, I saw the hundred number. I thought that's awfully small. Then you go to the right and see the head counts really one thirty. Is that the difference between the kids are going off to
Yep, so the, the one hundred point five three is the time the kids send, spend in the seats at Rochester High School. So our New Market kids, some get shaved off, some of them are full-time running start, so um, those get shaved off.
Okay, and then when it gets around to graduation time, we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty kids walking, hopefully.
And then a hundred point five three actually includes heart. Um, but yes, yes, that would be the goal.
Okay.
And the last one um, is just that chart in a um, or that information in a chart. So the red, big red arrows are starting point. So um, we are higher than where we ended last year and, and moving in the right direction. Any questions?
Thank you, Jill. Okay, I don't know if it was Jill or me that made everybody leave, but I'm gonna blame Jill because that way is, it works out better. Um, so I'm gonna talk with you about um, something called Ukaru and it doesn't roll off the tongue, but there's uh, a meaning in the word and I want to talk with you about this tonight. This is a a training slash program that we are really looking at to better support our students. It says what Ukaru means there. It means received. But I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly and I'm going to kind of talk to you about what it is and what our staff is learning and then the why closer to the end. Um, and so Justin, it's gonna be pretty quick going through. So the training is an eight-hour training. This is the first group of staff that was trained in August. Uh, you see all the mats there. I have a couple in the back of the room. I'm gonna show them to you in a few minutes. Um, and why we have the mats. But this eight-hour training includes trauma-informed practices as well as ways to help students who are struggling with managing themselves and regulating themselves to be more successful. So Ukaru talks, goes through eight different uh, topics in uh, the training. Uh, brain development, uh, a lot of information about trauma, how to communicate with students, conflict resolution. And then there are some protective physical skills. I'll explain what that means in a few minutes. So what I'm gonna do here is give you a little bit of a sample of a li, of what some of the training looks like that folks will be going through. Uh, the training goes through, we think about our students who are struggling with their, with regulating themselves and we want staff to understand the why behind it. Um, and how to support the students that are, that are going through this. Oftentimes, we have students who have come from backgrounds of trauma. Um, we have a lot of students that um, COVID itself caused trauma for, for some of our kiddos and some of our adults. So this is helping our staff learn what are some of those triggers to consider when it comes to uh, this, this, the student and what we might be seeing going on with them. So I'm not gonna read everything here, but you can see when we start looking at this, seeing some of the triggers that might be happening with kiddos. One of them that stands out to me is that being touched and we think about, you know, sometimes it would be nice to come up and, you know, put put your hand on someone's back, kind of a comforting type of things, but for some of our kiddos, that isn't comforting. So learning about what some of those triggers can be. And then the early warning signs. If you know me, I bounce my legs all the time. That's not really an early, early warning sign. It's just that I can't step, sit still ever. But some of these for people, like when you start to see them, their bodies tightening up and then maybe getting a louder voice or rocking or any of those types of things, those are early warning signs that we know we want to go in and make sure we're supporting the students and helping them to manage themselves through that situation. Lots of calming strategies. And again, I'm not teaching this to you. You don't, you know, this isn't about you learning that you should give your children molding clay. This is really for you to give an I, get an idea of what our staff is learning as they go through this training. Because there are a lot of things here that are really important to think about. We don't typically do the um, okay, go take a hot shower in the classroom, but we certainly can have them write in a journal or have, do some deep breathing or talking with somebody or those types of things. And then there are some of these that are, that are pretty fun. We have, we do use the body socks in a few situations. I know uh, Mr. Baba can speak to that because there's, we do have one in, in the classroom that he works in. And some of these are just that compression where when kiddos are wrapped in something, that can help them manage themselves. When it's, you know, when it's like, probably a lot of weekends to come here, when the weather's cold and we're watching football, wrapping in that tight blanket is very comforting. And there's, there's really something to that and it can make a difference for kiddos as well. We have the weighted blankets are our classrooms. We have um, a lot of equipment in our classrooms that are really beneficial for students to help their body get into a better place.
All right.
Yeah.
Sorry, but how do you get the kids in that then?
And they literally have to like climb in and get their bodies in, but when they know it, it's worth it to them.
They want to get in.
They want to. Yeah, this is definitely not about you better get in here. This is if, this is something that they want to do to help themselves regulate. Some kids really like it, some do not, and they don't want any part of it.
Sorry, Candy. Some will go actually pull that out of the cupboard.
Yep. I bet they do.
These are little, like, first offenders in kindergarten.
Usually, um, oftentimes like with high school kiddos, one of the things that's really works well are Usually, um, oftentimes, like with high school kiddos, one of the things that's really works well are those tight Under Armour shirts that kids use for sports and things like that, it's a, it's a um, it doesn't look out of the ordinary, but we have kiddos at our high school that will use those because that helps them with their body and space and feel more regulated. Other things to think about, again, not things we can always do in the classrooms, but there are some ti- some of these things that we, we do have and we do try to support our students with. Um, I can think of a couple of classrooms where when you go in, there's some different lighting and some music, and there are just some places in there, or we have a couple sensory rooms that are places where kids can go and relax. There's one in the middle school that was created um beginning of last year, I believe, where there are lots of different items that we talked about, and it's just a smaller space, and kids can go in there on their own accord, they can choose to go in there, take a moment, breathe for a few minutes, and then get back on with their day. So that's some of the, that's some of the teaching that um, our staff can walk away and have some tools that they can use after getting this training, like when I go back to the classroom, here are some things I can do. But our big focus of this outside of just those skills and strategies is really thinking about trauma informed practices. And these are five big deals that are talked about in those trauma informed practices. We want our kids to feel safe. We want to make sure that we are giving them that trusting environment, um, making sure that they have choice in some of the things they're doing, and making sure we don't get into power struggles with kids, because that's, that's not healthy for anybody. And that idea of sharing power with the individual, oftentimes, and I think of this with our really little people, um, their lives are out of their control in, in some cases, and they want to have control of something. And when we can have, give them control of, you know, which way they're gonna sit at this table or whatever it might be, they can have control of something. And empowering them to really be able to, you know, figure out how they can build themselves up. We keep going, so there's all the rest on that, one more. Uh, yeah, you can just put them all on there, so I'm not gonna. So when we look at students, one of the things that we teach our staff to learn is to consider where our kiddos are in this, on this scale here, are, are they at that calm place, we're doing okay? Are they starting to get agitated, or are they at that boiling point? And when thinking about this, we as adults need to be aware, so we know how to help our students, but we also want to help our students to be aware, so they know how to help themselves. So comfort versus control, just some things to think about that are really important. Now, again, I'm doing an eight hour training and, and ten minutes, but I want you to really see some of the gist of this work because it's really powerful and really important for kids. So when we think about that idea of comfort ver- versus control, we treat the person like a person. We, we don't um, I'm, I'm trying to think of the right word, but we don't think of what they're saying, their ideas to them, to the six year old, to the fifteen year old, what they're saying really matters, and we want to make sure that we treat them that way as well, that we treat who they are as individuals and as people who need our support, and we're there for them. That's all on that one. So here are some of the tools that you can use in a situation where you have students who have experienced trauma or are struggling with regulating themselves. Um, and on the bottom of this list is Ucaru, and Ucaru, Ucaru is, like I said, eight hours training, where about five hours of it is really around this trauma informed practice. So really learning how to see what's going on with our students and how we can intervene and support them. Okay, so any questions on that first part before I get into the mats? So this next part is a little different, um, it feels a little odd. And it was, it took me a minute to kind of wrap my head around this because we're teaching some of our staff how to use these mats. And it seems like a very odd thing, and even when I walked in with them, they're like, are you playing football? No, I'm not playing football. And unfortunately, we have students who are very dysregulated and have a hard time controlling their bodies. Oftentimes, this is in the primary school or the elementary, but the majority of the situations are at the primary school. And some examples are when kiddos are unsafe to themselves, they may hit their head against the wall, they may be trying to hurt themselves because they're so, their bodies are, are so out of control, and what's going on in their mind, they just, they're not, they can't get themselves regulated. So we as staff are learning how to use these mats to support our kiddos. So I'm gonna say, I use your Jill shirt, so maybe Jill might be trying to bang her head against here, we can use the mat to help her from banging her head against the wall. Thank you, Jill. And that feels kind of silly, we're using a mat, but we're keeping Jill safe, and we're not taking Jill and yanking her and moving her away, which takes away her dignity. We do this, she can keep her dignity, she can still be who she is, and it's a safer situation. It's a very odd, and we think about, why would we need to do this in school? But we do have kiddos who are struggling with regulating themselves, and we want to have safe ways to help them to work through that.
And we're gonna continue to let them hit their head on the wall, but with a pad in the way?
We, yes, as long as it's, as long as it's safe, yeah, so we want to make sure that's safe, and we've had situations. We've only had the masks this year, we've had situations in the past where kids have hit their head on something, and it is not safe. And we are going to make, we are going to physically move them to a way that's safe. But if that's safe and if they're not hurting themselves, these pads are specifically made for this, for this reason, then we, we will help them, we will put the mat up, and then we will work on other ways to help them regulate their bodies. We don't just let them keep going, we work on whatever strategies are right for them, we'll lower the lights or we'll turn on some music. Um, Bubba lives this a lot, so he's, he could speak to this much, much more clearly than I could, but he know, he's one that can really, he, he knows his kiddos and knows how to help them if their bodies are dysregulated. So sorry to call you out there.
Laura, is it mostly the one on one folks that will be doing this, though? Like the classroom teacher won't do it as much as the?
The classroom teacher won't do it as much, but um, we are, right now, we're working on getting um, all of our um educational assistants that are in special education trained with this training. Um, we should have, we did a group of about twenty before school started, we're gonna do about, a group of about twenty during conference week, and we're just gonna keep trying to work on getting people trained. Now, the other part, I do want to talk about this part real quick too, and then I'm almost done. But this is the part that feels even icier to say, but it's not icier to do. Please quote that because that was some really vocabulary that I used there. Um, we have students who will physically be aggressive towards adults, towards other students and things like that. And that's not something we like to talk about, we don't want to talk about that that's happening, but it is. And uh, since COVID, the amount of students, we have a lot of kiddos who really haven't been outside their homes or had that preschool experience or anything like that, and so their way of getting what they want, or their way of dealing with situations might be physically active, or might be, I'm gonna run out the door and run down the street, or whatever it might be, because they're trying to figure out how to regulate themselves. I want to give as quick caveat, this is not about students who are just trying to be a pain. And I don't want you to hear that at all, this is about students who who need our support to learn how to regulate themselves. Just like we have students who need support in learning how to, you know, read words that have that E at the end. We're, we're teaching our students how to regulate themselves. So if a student might be acting out, and might be hitting at adults or things like that, we have the mats. They have these on the back here, so you can hold them like this. We might want, we might have two adults here, and so in answer to the classroom teacher question, most likely the rest of the class will be out. And it could possibly be the teacher, it could be somebody else that's keep holding the mats to help our students to be able to punch and not hurt anybody or themselves. I'm gonna give you um, one of the things with this is, just like any behavior management type of system, sometimes it can cause kids to escalate before they deescalate. And sometimes you, it takes a longer time, but we're not putting our hands on kids and we're not isolating them. We're finding ways, we're working through another way to support our kids without isolating or restraining. And with the number of students that are not regulated yet, this is something that's really important for us as a system.
So if uh situations like this occur in the classroom, um, are you taking the other kids that are in the classroom and moving them out? Or are they personally witnessing this?
I just, I appreciate that question.
Um, the isolation room where you got the ruby lights and music, and that sounds like a great place that a lot of kids would probably want to go hang out, relax, take a nap. You know.
So I'm gonna, in regards to your first question, like in the classroom, if a student is really dysregulated, the rest of the class knows they're gonna get up and leave and have their instruction in, in another location. And so they go in, they continue their day, and then that student is supported to be able to get themselves regulated again.
Yeah, good, so the kids already know ahead of time, they're already cycling through this program?
The kids, the kids often learn, I mean, depends on the classroom, but the kids will often learn, okay, if, if kiddo's having a hard time, it might be one particular kiddo, or if any kiddo's having a hard time, we're just gonna get up and leave, you're not gonna point out a kiddo, like Justin is having a hard time, we're all gonna get up and leave, but if somebody is having a rough time in the room, then we're all gonna leave, and then the adults can support that, that individual child.
Okay. Any calming techniques or stuff, like you like turn the lights down at all?
Yeah, no, and I'm not there all the time when this happens, so I'm speaking, like, but the last time I was in the building when, when um, there was a student that was really struggling with their regulation, uh, the, the lights were off, the blind was open, so there was, there was plenty of light in the room, but the lights were off. And um, one adult was over near where the child was with a mat up, and another adult was a little further away with a mat just kind of as backup. And by the time I got there, the student had started to um regulate a little bit more.
He escalated.
Yeah, yeah, so they had started to deescalate and their, their body was calming down a bit.
And the parents involved in these conversations when these issues occur and?
Yes, parents are always, are always in the loop, and there's regu- there are some kiddos that have regular conversations. Amy has regular conversations, or Danny has regular conversations with parents. So, yeah, it is, it is definitely um, the parents are part of the, of the situation and what's going on and the why and all of that. Really important, that part, the parent part. So this just talks about why this might be necessary, and it is about if a student is likely to hurt themselves, likely to hurt somebody else, we want to use something other than isolation or restraint to help them get back on track. So these are some things that are practiced, along with the blocking, if somebody is um coming at you, there's also like what to do if you're back against a wall, or if a student tries to rip your hair or something like that, there are some strategies that are taught about that that are all hands off of students and ways to help ourselves and the students stay safe. This part I want to really quickly mention is when an incident ends, there's no shame, no blame. We're gonna, we're gonna help our student get back on track, and then we're going to talk about how do we move forward from here, how do we su- support you to be more successful? I mean, i- if there's something that needs a consequence, there might be a consequence, um, but it's not, well, we think less of you now because of this situation. And something about Ucaru versus isolation or restraint, this isolation and restraint can be, it can really cause a lot of stress for students, you know, mentally, to be able like be in a room or be restrained or whatever it might be, and this is shown to show much less of that stress, and students can be able to pick up and keep going afterwards more easily. Okay, so that's the end of that one, um, any questions?
I have no, you answered all my questions.
Okay.
Mr. Boyd?
I've got one question.
Yes.
So it's been a couple of years for me to respond over there, but at what point do you have to call nine one one?
Unfortunately, as you know, that does occur. Um, Thomas has had the opportunity to see a couple of our kiddos that are really struggling with keeping themselves regulated. Uh, we try not to do it very often, but when it gets to be a situation where the safety of our adults and our students is to a place where it can't be managed, then nine one one is called. And I will say, like, I'm thinking of the primary school and the high school, middle school, nine one one would be called earlier because our kiddos are bigger and the capacity to be able to manage students who are struggling with their body of a student who's six two might be different than a student who's, you know, three, four. Does that answer your question, Thomas?
Yes, and it's just that, like you stated, in the younger uh students, uh, it comes to age and and before we can do any kind of uh transporter, any, anything like that, uh, we definitely have to have the parents there um, for consent, um, you know, anything along those lines, so, um, and if the kids have to be restrained, uh, that brings in other um, other protocols and issues uh to go along with it. So it's not a, it's not an easy step, uh, when we have to do something like that.
Agreed, thank you. And one thing I want to say is, um, parents, uh, parents are, this is hard for parents because their kiddos are really having a, a challenging time, and partnering with parents and working together with parents is so important in this process. It's not really what we're talking about here, but I want to give kudos to our building administrators who partner with parents through these situations and work together to help the, help the kiddos. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Intervened.
You have to me.
All right.
Good, all right, so just a few things to wrap up this part of our reports. Um, first of all, we really did have a smooth start to the twenty three, twenty four school year, we had um, staff were ready to go, they were excited to go, our kids were excited to be in school, um, systems were in place. It, it really was, I'll, I'll just say it again, a really smooth start to the year. Um, our seniors were excited to be there, you can see that was the first day of school up in that upper right hand corner, that was the senior sunrise, those kids were out there on the track of, I think, quarter to six, five thirty, yeah, it was, and there was a good sixty plus of them that were there, ready to start their senior year, so that was exciting. Uh, many of these pictures are taken on the first day. Uh, the teachers really try to bring the kids in, they're there for six hours, so it's not about sitting and learning all the rules, it's about starting to learn and engage, they did definitely learn about um expectations and how to be a good student, but along the way, they were, were engaging and learning and um, starting to do their work already, so it was um really good to be out there and a, a part of it, and it's been the same thing for the next three weeks, or, yeah, it's been three weeks in school now. We do have the dual language program, which is new, and um, this is actually a very short, about twenty seconds of the first day in the dual language program, so there's only half of the kindergarteners, kindergarten here at this point, so you don't see a lot of kids in the class, uh, but Mr. Maris is here and she's talking with the kids, and this is the Spanish part, and so these kids literally were just sitting down and getting started. And if you want to listen to Ms. Ramirez work with the kids. So right from the first day, they, you know, the kids, when they were in the Spanish part of the day, were hearing Spanish a hundred percent. So right from the first day, they, you know, the kids, when they were in the Spanish part of the day, were hearing Spanish a hundred percent of the time. She was taking the lunch orders, what do the kids want for lunch? And after I stopped the recording, she went through and. Told them their options each each time again, and the kids had to let her know what what they wanted, so it was great. Um. One of the young men in this class, this class was interesting because when we divided the students half and half. Um, that young man that you could see sitting right to Ms. Ramirez's right. Was probably the, one of the only English-speaking students in there. Of most of the other kids, when we divided the kids in half. Were Spanish-speaking students. And by the second day, he was counting to ten in Spanish and was very proud of himself and was just doing a great job, so. It's exciting to see the kids learning in this situation. They did have a family um advisory night. Where they invited all the families that are in the dual language program to dinner. They had twenty-five families show. So that's out of about forty. And um the family were able to get together. They learned a little bit about what was going on in the classrooms, what they can expect from their kids. And then they went and spent time in both Ms. Insley's and Ms. Ramirez's class with the kids. And they were able to see the teachers work with the kids in the different settings, so they were able to see the kids sing some songs in Spanish and just. And then go into the English and Ms. Insley's room and do some, um watch her teach the kids. So they got an idea of what's actually happening with the kids when they go into each of the classrooms. Um, but we're gonna continue to do that throughout the year. Um. Both of the teachers and Maggie is, Maggie Evans is really working to try and create a family culture with this group. Who's gonna be together all the way through fifth grade and even beyond that. So that is the dual language program. Um. Next, we did have a back-to-school bash and um. This was organized by Nancy and Esmeralda in our RISE Center. And uh we had, oh goodness, uh there was uh over twenty community groups. Community and uh school partners who were at the back-to-school bash. We had over six hundred people in attendance at the bash and people were there just visiting all the different tables. They had. Um, the uh Hands-on Children's Museum was there. We had Youth Dynamics there. There. There was a Family Support Center that was there. Boys and Girls Club had a table. A lot of our booster organizations had a table. The High School Band. Was there with the table. The Robotics Club was there with the table. That's what that top left-hand one is. Where the kids will learn how to build robotics. So just families out, um, you know, just. Experiencing different things and learning about different opportunities that are in our community. The Fire Department was there with the fire truck. And um the, what's Reptile Man?
Course.
Yes, Reptile Man was there at the end of the day, so. He uh did a big show for everybody at six. They had hot dogs um. There, so it was a really good community event with a really good. Uh, participation from our community. Uh, great day too. It's beautiful weather. Couldn't, we couldn't have asked for a better day. So it was a good event. Um, I don't wanna complete my report without saying that we are feeling the reduc- reductions that we met, that we've made. Uh, we have fewer EAs in our classrooms. We have fewer teachers. We have fewer support personnel. We have fewer maintenance staff. And that's based on the cuts that we made last year moving into this year. And, you know, we're making it work and people are doing what they can, but um. Now, we, we do notice that we have fewer personnel. Um, and I just wanna acknowledge that people are working harder and and smarter to make sure everything's moving forward for our kids. Um. It's, but where we have to be, and I'm afraid that next year we're gonna have to even see, you know, more of those reductions. Um, but gotta acknowledge the fact that people are working, working hard to make sure that we do what we need to do for kids. And then some upcoming events, um September thirtieth, there's, that's Saturday, there's a memorial for Mr. Larry Heinz. Um, it's at the high school at one o'clock. And there's lots of other things going on this weekend in honor of uh Mr. Heinz. Um, sounds like a wonderful man who I wish I'd met. Um, October fourth, there's a chamber candidates forum at Sweet Hall at six o'clock. October seventh, there's our board retreat and I'm gonna come back to that in just a minute, but tentatively scheduled it. For the same time as we had last um last year where we started. Kind of gathered at eight thirty, connected, then started our agenda at nine and adjourned at one. Um, we can confirm that we can all make that work. October twenty-fifth is our next board meeting, then eighth is the board meeting, and then we have WASD, the conference on the sixteenth through the eighteenth. Um, I did put together a short list of some um items that I've been just. Putting together. I don't know that we can cover all these things or if there's even, there might be some other things that you wanna add to this. But I have on our list of topics, levy rate conversation. We need to talk about what our rate's gonna be when we go out for our levy in February. The old gym and how we wanna see the old gym used. Literacy work. Um, as you know, that's a focus in our district this year, so telling you a little bit more about the work we're doing in that area. An update on our solus- solution tree work with and around PLCs. Maybe looking at some more data. When I showed you some data a little while ago, you had mentioned maybe wanting to see some more, so that might be something. Um, security update. Talking about the budget reduction process because after our last work session, we know we need to have a plan and I. Um, will share with you what I'm thinking for moving forward there. And then next steps with the bond. So two things, first of all, is the time there. Does that work on Saturday, the seventh?
Neil wanna start at six, dude.
Six?
Yeah, I don't like. Uh. I'd love to see, yes, that'd be a perfect opportunity to work for everyone else and I can make it work. Going with something with the United Way Senior Program, uh New Lake Fair.
That's the date we had on our calendar for the, for the, yeah, but if you.
I, I will make this work. I can do this.
Okay. It is eight, eight thirty to one, looking good.
Yeah, it works for me.
Six thirty to ten.
Six thirty, ten, alright.
Hey, we can go earlier.
I didn't even probably check with Lana first. I feel eight.
Eight? Okay, eight to twelve thirty?
Make that happen.
Alright. Alright, well, make it eight to twelve. Are you good with that, Michael?
Absolutely.
Okay. I will check with Lana and make sure she's good with that. And Thomas, you're good, eight to twelve thirty?
Oh, yeah, that worked.
Okay, is there any other agenda side topics that you would like me to add to the list?
Uh, that's football day, so we need to get in there and get out early.
You got it, Thomas.
I know that I'm just be getting a list of uh WASD priorities. Go over this year.
Okay.
Trying to get back to normalcy, but that's what's been kinda thrown in the air last few years.
Alright, anything else for the list?
Maybe just talking about WASD.
WASD gym?
Just.
The conference?
Yeah, the conference and plans. I don't even, is that W or?
Yep, W.
W.
So are we going to that? Cause we talked about this earlier, cause of budget restraints.
Yeah, that's something else we can talk about, but yes, right now you are signed up to go.
Great.
So I put it on the, on the draft so we can, or the agenda so we can talk about it. Alright, I will map out an agenda. I don't know that we can, like I said, cover everything, so I'll. Work on that. Is there anything on this list that you don't wanna see me take off? Let me ask that.
Which old gym?
Yep.
Roof looks beautiful. I I was driving by the other day, I said, you seen it? Look, we just put a new roof on that thing. Like, pay attention and drive. I'm like, no, I'm not looking at it. You need to look at it. It looks beautiful. They did a great job.
So are you saying keep that on the list?
Oh. We can fit it in wherever.
Okay.
I like, it's all good. Levee rate thing is probably our most important aspect.
That is important, yes.
So.
If you think of anything else, let me know. That's all I have.
Yes, well, let's see. Uh. Our new business, uh where we're at now, uh donation from uh West Thurston Fire Fighter Association. Agreement for one thousand dollars. I do not see anybody here from the fire department today.
Oh, Thomas.
Thomas, can you tell us about the thousand dollar?
Yeah, hold on a second. I'm asking questions about that right now.
If this is the check they gave us at the last.
Alright, so I need to make a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Are you here, Thomas? I don't wanna leave you out of the loop.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out right now from my partner here. He says that we, and reading this, uh, blah, 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 blah. We donated a thousand from our department and a thousand from our union.
Yes, correct. And we were, and you guys issued us a check last time, so this is the formal motion to accept it.
Oh, okay. I was about to say, I thought somebody was supposed to be there last time.
Yep, they were here.
We had, we had a couple of people here.
Okay.
Okay, so, alright, so we would already, we already received it, now we need to formally accept it.
Correct.
So. Before we go, this says a thousand, he just said two thousand.
We accepted another thousand at the last meeting.
We already. Okay, sorry. Alright, so can I get a motion to approve the one thousand dollar lunch debt? Uh, payment from uh Thurston County Professional Firefighters.
So moved.
Second.
Grant seconds. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope, well, it passes. And again, tell everybody there, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thing, I wish we could figure out a way to. Do something to we knock this thing down to nothing every year. You know, it was.
And and so if I'm still understanding, is the the primary and elementary school all eat for free? Is that correct? And the high school still has to pay?
That is correct. There is a chance. The federal government just passed a. Uh, legislation that would reduce the direct cert number down to twenty-five percent. Would mean, which would mean we would qualify for free lunch for secondary schools as well, so. We're hoping to hear something by October twenty-sixth to see what the implementation of that new legislation will be. But that would be a really good thing for our kids.
Okay, yep.
But at this point, and until we say otherwise, our elementarys eat free and our secondaries have to pay unless they are. Unless they submit their free and reduced lunch application and are approved.
Is it, is it possible to get the numbers from the high school on um. How many uh high schoolers are physically buying lunch? Or, you know, when I say buying, they're going through the line and getting a lunch?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm curious, since we were talking about that today.
Yep, we can get those numbers.
So, um, yeah, just, you know, how many kids are actually eating lunch? Cause when I went to high school, I never, I I never ate lunch in the, the, in the mess hall. Now, when I was in elementary and primary, sure. But no, I was, I'm just kinda curious. That's, that's all.
Okay. I would get that for you.
Thank you, Thomas. Great idea. Mess hall. Awesome. Alright, uh, again, thank you, West Thurston Fire. Guys are amazing. They're great for our community. Uh, alright, next uh word of new business is facility card fee.
This is an increase in the rate of our facility card key that would, that is used by uh. People who come in to use our facilities, who sign up to use our facilities. They currently pay five dollars and it would be an increase to ten dollars. Anything to add, Justin?
The cards cost more than five dollars now. When we first started, they were, they cost like two dollars. So the cost is more than doubles. No hard to get.
What's the category two, three, and four? Yeah, like, you've locked our cards already, so you.
Those are categories based on use. You you set up, so we're really looking at the fee, not not the category.
Yeah, or twenty-two. Those are actual facility use rates.
Oh, okay, okay, like community members. Alright, alright. Makes sense to me. So uh, so it's a ten dollar fee that we're raising it to?
Correct, well, from five to ten.
Okay. I'm not sure I get it. I'm slow here tonight.
Cards like to get into to use the, use the facility. If I wanna come and use the facility, that card's gonna cost me ten dollars.
Yep.
And you're gonna charge me a facility fee on top of it?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Depending on what category.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, you don't buy the card each time you use the facility. You can, once.
You get it and then, okay.
Yeah, don't break it.
You have to replace this another ten bucks.
There you go.
So like ten dollars per year for that one?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
Per use?
No, no. Ten dollars forever, as long as you don't break it.
Forever.
Till you move to tonight.
I'm not going there. I'm not going there. Uh, okay, so I guess at this time, uh we need to approve. Uh, I guess, can I get a motion to approve the raise in our fees for our cards?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, well, that fee is approved. Okay, I'll click the wrong day button again and now I just did it again.
Yes, you have a couple of comments for items on the agenda.
Oh, that's correct, alright. Dude, so is there anybody here with any comments for things that aren't on our agenda?
No sign up, there's no one else.
Signed out? Alright, well, with that, um, meeting is adjourned.